The 24th, 2015 to order. We have a prayer by Councilmember Walter.
Lord, we ask you to send your Spirit of servanthood upon all of us gathered here this evening to do your work for the benefit of all in our community. We thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We ask you to bless our elected and appointed officials so they may deliberate with wisdom and act with courage. Bless every single member of our community who come here to speak before the board so they may state their cause with honesty and humility before council. Lord, we ask you to bless us all. In this particular week of Thanksgiving, we give you thanks and praise. Ask of this in your name, Jesus, amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk call to roll.
Brokaw, here.
Gries.
Here.
Halter.
Here.
Hermes.
Just made it.
Lee.
Here.
Walter.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Okay, we have the approval of minutes, the council meeting of October 27th, regular council meeting, and the November 10th, 2015, meeting and work session.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of October 27th, 2015, regular council meeting and the November 10th, 2015, meeting work session as presented by clerk of council.
A second. So be it. Okay. This is the time for residents to address council. Time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. When recognized, please come forward to the lectern, give your name and address and state your comments and questions. Council meetings are taped recorded for ease of transcriptions. Comments are limited to two minutes. Anybody? Okay. All right. Hearing none. Reports of village officials, municipal manager, Yvonne Kovat.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have quite a bit going on as usual. First of all, our rainwater harvest project started just yesterday down behind the shopping center, so they're moving along pretty quickly already. We have leaf collection underway that will be wrapping up, I believe it's early next week. We have good news in our recommission. There was an applicant for that vacancy that we will have next year, and I've talked to Doug Kohler. We're gonna get together with the individual and try to interview him and bring that to council at the next meeting.
Who was it?
His name is Ed Ramsey.
Ed Ramsey?
Yes. I believe it's a fairly new resident.
Okay.
Yeah, it's exciting. Also want to let you know that I received a call from Joel Suggs yesterday, and he would like to meet. He has some comments on his contract, some concerns with it. So he was not able to meet prior to our meeting tonight. We're actually gonna meet next week one day, and so if we could at the appropriate time, I guess table that or hold it at some, you know, for consideration at a later date, that would be helpful. I know that we have some big items on tonight related to garbage. The one concerning the Rumkey contract does reference the bid sheet, the bid form, so I'm gonna go ahead and pass that out so you have that in front of you at this point in time. It was not an attachment, just something informational for you, and we can go through that at the time that we go through the legislation if that's the easiest to do it as we talk about each particular item. So I think that will be it for now. Thank you.
Any questions?
On the meeting you said with Mr. Suggs, is that with you only or?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay, law director, Mr. Forbes.
Thank you. The only thing I would report on tonight, it's just my, I found a new bill in the state legislature to keep an eye on for you, a House bill, I believe it's 48, passed the House the other day, and it's on to the Senate. Just relates to potential changes in the concealed carry law and how it might be implemented in government buildings, police stations. So that's, we'll be tracking that. I don't have any details about it now. It just passed the House, I think about a week ago, and we'll see how it makes its way through the Senate. That's my, that will be my state legislature tracking thing for you for a while.
If I might, in addition to government buildings, does that apply to schools as well?
There is, there is language in it that it says it no longer applies at daycares. There are some new rules that could work at universities, but I have not given it, I haven't really analyzed the full text of it yet. I've just seen some of the summary work that's been done. Typically, until it starts making its way through the second House, it doesn't be much good to spend a lot of time analyzing the details because it will likely change as it goes through the Senate.
Do we have any recent news about the paint on the service building?
No, I have not had a chance to speak to the attorney in my office, and I don't know if you have.
I've been working directly with the company.
Okay.
All right, moving on, clerk of council, Catherine Lys.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The October 2015 community calendar and ordinance numbers 201, 507, LNR, 08F, 09LNR, and resolutions numbers 2015, 37CD, 38F, 39CD, and 40F were posted as required. Additionally, public notices of the finance and audit committee and the traffic and safety committee meetings were also posted as required. And if there are no questions, that would conclude my report.
Any questions? Hearing none. Chief of police, filling in for the chief is Lieutenant Ward. Anything to report?
Yeah. The past month, we had a high level of training. Most of it was pre-training. We had Officer Spinelli White and more attended crisis intervention training. Training topics included dealing with the unimaginable suicide by cop and mass casualty. We had three officers complete the intoxicizer 8,000 training, that's breath testing, so pretty much everybody in the police department is certified on that. Officer Patton completed a field training officer school, and the chief and I went to the regional legal law updates conducted by the Attorney General. The officers also who carry the patrol rifles, they completed their annual requalifications, and then we had our departmental meeting on October 29th where we covered mental health, school violence, courtroom test and testifying skills, and tactical de-escalation. The regional crime information center in conjunction with the Ohio State Patrol is looking to access some grant dollars for, to fund electronic citations for vehicles. The funding may pay for the placement of the printers and the police cruisers, and we have asked to be part of that project. Last month, we received the 12 new Glock, 40 Talabers, and we completed our upgrade to the new sidearms. During our departmental meeting, we evaluated a multi-year strategic plan and was updated, and he says that you all have that already. On October 10th, Officer Patton completed an investigation that began in August that involved the theft of the computer equipment, jewelry, and lawn tools from the resident in the F section. Officer Patton was able to locate and recover the stolen property and charged the suspect with two counts of theft. The case was cleared by an arrest as a result of Officer Patton's excellent police work. October 29th, we submitted a proposal for $20,000 grant to the Office of Ohio Criminal Justice Service to provide an officer for the Drug Abuse Task Force in 2016, and will be notified sometime in January on that. October, or November 3rd, we ordered digital projector that will be mounted in the ceiling of the council chambers. Our new municipal prosecutor requested the new equipment so the videos from the traffic scopes and other visual aids can be used in court. The equipment was funded by the mayor's court computerization fund. In early November, we started monitoring the vacant properties in the C-sections as well as the group of activity of active juvenile suspected of delinquent activities. Officers have engaged in foot patrol and in targeting the areas and will continue the aggressive patrols and take enforcement action where it's warranted. During the month of October, the department investigated six accidents. That was down from seven in October last year, six crimes down from eight last October, and 220 incidents up from 166 from last October. Of the total, 685 contacts, 240 were dispatched or received by telephone compared to 208 last October. The department provided assistance to the public 131 times and assisted other agency 44 times. We issued, made 25 criminal arrests and had 62 traffic arrests. And also, on November the 12th, we did our community-wide national watch at the Troubadour, and it was attended by over 50 residents, and we received very positive feedback on that meeting, and that's all I have.
Cool. Thank you. Any questions?
Was there any top-line information from that town meeting at all that you would like to highlight?
They were, they were very interested in it and liked it, and they wanted us to continue to have those. You know, they were concerned with the heroin and stuff in town, and, but they were very receptive to it.
Good.
Would like to see more of that.
Did we also, I mentioned, the chief mentioned that we were going to have another meeting other January or February?
That, I believe, that was for the community policing program.
Okay. Do we know the exact date? Do we know the location and time or yet?
No, we're still getting applications in, so I think he's gonna put something out in January when we're gonna start that, with that.
Thank you.
And does anybody have anything for, to report on? The fire chief isn't here this evening.
Oh, I thought Tony was here and just lost some weight and had a facelift.
Right. He did send me an email and asked if I would express the fire department's gratitude for all the attendance at the turkey raffle and those that didn't attend but were able to make donations through the envelopes at their doors, and they were very grateful for it, grateful for the support of the community, and it's a pleasure to work with the citizens that are supportive of the fire department.
Cool. All right. And I've got the police department municipal court distribution summary report here, and the county received $33.50. The state of Ohio received $1,030.50, and $5,224 went into the Green Hills coffers for a grand total of $6,294. Also, before we leave tonight, it's that time of the year for going out and checking the Christmas lights or house decorations so we can do the mayor's awards for lighting up the town. So be thinking about some date in December, I'm guessing the week of the 14th, and see who all wants to go and if anybody has a van or anything like that that we could pile into possibly. All right, that's all I have unless anybody has a question. Committee reports, service and streets, councilmember Walter.
Mr. Mayor, we met on November the 16th. We discussed at that great length the garbage contract with Rumkey, and we decided there were several choices, and we decided to go with choice number three, and at appropriate time, I will let Ms. Kovat to say a little bit more about that. Also, we are aware that we got some monies back from the class action suit from Salt. We got some monies with that. We also are full on our supply of salt, so let us know. Know. Also, we discussed the situation with the building, the painting on the building, and I do believe that we have some kind of a compromise.
Right, that we're working on, yes.
They're working on right now. Okay. And we also discussed the planting of the trees, that it was going to be pretty much coming to full blown, and whoever has not been started or been started, whatever, we have it there.
Correct.
You would like to make a comment on that? When is that? Between which dates and which dates are we doing?
It could be any time between now and the week after Thanksgiving.
Correct.
And they've all been marked, all the locations have been marked with white dots on the curbs, so we're ready to go. The next up, they'll be calling the underground utilities to mark anything in the area so residents may start seeing those marks in those particular areas, and then we'll be along sooner after to plant the trees.
Okay, we met as the consultant with the staff, and I was very grateful that you could accommodate us there, and we just do the same on the month of December. This time, we have to move it up a little bit because we have the garbage contract, and it was going to be voted upon at the council meeting, and we had scheduled the meeting for the 30th, and that was not really working out well in the calendar-wise, so that's why we moved it to the 16th. And I would like to keep the one in December to, if at all possible, to the same date that we have on the, on the calendar, unless we have some other emergency.
At the end of?
Yeah, the end of December, the last Monday of December. And that concludes my report.
Any questions? Community development, Mr. Halter.
Yes, the walking paths, with Doug's help and AdPro, which did a great job, are up and operating. So you'll find three paths that start at the gazebo, the common path, which is a quarter mile, the Green Hills mile, which is a mile, the Pioneer path, which is three miles. I did find two of the labels. There's actually heat treatment with a torch, and then put the labels down, they're foil-based, and then rolled. Not easy to peel up, but I did find two already peeled up and was able to replace those. So it might take a little bit of time to, you know, get that out of some people's system to, you know, as far as thinking it might be a neat thing to do. But, you know, what's nice is the artwork's done, and getting a replacement is not that difficult. I don't know how much action they'll see, you know, with the cooler weather, but there's a lot of possibilities. You know, I don't know if we can walk with the mayor for a mile or three miles or 30 or whatever.
I don't know.
But, you know, it might be a start-off point for community to get together and do some things. We were gonna put a map together, but you said that there's a possibility of someone doing that.
Right, right. Hamilton County Regional Planning is working on a free map for us, and should have a draft by December 4th.
Perfect, perfect. So the map will help in case by chance something did get peeled up. But it's three nice paths. When we were putting them down, I was actually enjoying the walk, and it's, I think it's gonna be a good thing for the community. And that concludes my report at this point.
Any questions?
Mr. Halter, one of the residents called me, and, well, just because that person did the three-mile walk, they said it was a particular junction that she didn't know if we wanted to turn right or left or how to proceed on that. Would I be able to forward you that information?
Yeah, that's fine. The only thing that, now, there was, the only thing I can think of is whenever it came to a right turn or a left turn, it says right turn or left turn.
Okay.
With one exception, and that's the quarter-mile path, I did not, when I found the two peeled up, these are just arrows pointing to the right. I will probably replace those with something that says right. But, you know, let us know.
Okay.
I mean, obviously, we tried to give it our best shot, but if there's something that makes it.
This was a specific, was on the three-mile.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just let us know, we'll take a look at it, and, you know, we'll make adjustments as we need to.
And these are throughout the village?
They start at the gazebo. In the first quarter-mile's quite short, but, you know, good for starters, it just goes around the common. The second one crosses over Winton and wraps around and comes back down along the west side of Winton and then back over. And then the other one is actually the same as the Pioneer Run, which takes you obviously, you know, quite a ways around.
I walk my dog in the morning before the lights come on, and I was walking, and I noticed it, and I took my phone out and kind of couldn't see it because it was dark.
We should have done glow-in-the-dark. I didn't count on people doing it in the dark.
And I was impressed, because, you know, it was one of those things, like it wasn't there and then it was.
I know that there were some people who say it's long overdue, but they are finally down, and hopefully we'll get some good news out of it.
So when it's light, I can look at it and follow the directions.
You should, you should be able to do that. If you end up in a corner and you can't go any farther, hopefully that map will help you. If we lay down some more stickers or labels, then we'll do that as well.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Halter, have anybody thought about having perhaps some kind of information on the village office or something for citizens to say, well, you know, at the end of the year, I have completed so many miles, you know, like that, and perhaps being recognized for that?
We actually talked about it. We didn't know if that would be something in conjunction with one of the local villages. You know, it's like, I, you get a discount on a coffee at the Troubadour, for example, if you've done so many, or, I don't know. I think there's a lot of possibilities now that they're down. I think first, we'll just make sure we iron out any bugs and make sure that it all functions well, and then I think we need to just brainstorm on what can be done to. I really like the idea of walking with a council member or something, an opportunity to talk, you know, if Melanie's available the whole time.
Before hours.
With his redog.
I belong to, I've been on time for a swimming situation that then everybody would mark how many-
The frequent buyer.
The miles that you have done, and at the end of the summer, then there was a gathering of award for how many miles you had been swimming and things like that. So I thought that might be appropriate for the walkers as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a lot of possibilities, but definitely, you know, that can be considered, and hopefully we'll get a lot of good use out of them.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, traffic and safety, councilmember Brokaw.
Traffic and safety met prior to the neighborhood watch meeting. It was relatively short. We went over the report, and then I attended the neighborhood watch, which had a really good turnout. I was impressed with the turnout and with the food, so ate dinner there. The other thing is not traffic and safety related, but I thought it was interesting, sorry. I'm pulling it up because at work, Liberty Township Fire Chief Stumpf sent me this email that he's, he belongs to the Liberty Township Historical Society, and I was, the fore it was hunting turkeys in Cincinnati, and then it says history in your own backyard. And then it says, "Back in 1938, the Greenbelt community of Green Hills, Ohio, was built by the federal government on poor farmland just north of the city. The area of Green Hills soon featured a new park called Winton Woods, which offered everything from archery classes to horseback riding. We recently purchased, produced a series of 10 videos on the community of Green Hills, which included the only covered bridge left in Hamilton County, a former mill site, the location of a former one-room school in Winton Woods, and more. Some of these videos even feature vintage footage, video footage dating back to 1940. For an interesting exploration of the Green Hills area, click here to view all 10 videos." So I thought it was nice to get this email, and of course, one of my colleagues and coworkers forwarding it to me knowing where I am, where I live.
Can you put that onto us? Maybe you can put a link onto the hardware.
And there is already a link to it on June 10th, so.
So, yes, and it has a lovely picture of a big old turkey and people with bows and arrows.
Parting turkey?
I don't know, they have bows and arrows.
That's part of the archery golf. That is a concept. I don't know if it kept the population down or what.
We're talking 1940, come on.
So it was, it's nice, it's a nice little history in your own backyard looks to be the website and the publication, so.
Any questions, comments? All right, hearing none, finance and audit, councilmember Gries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Finance and audit met on November 10th. We reviewed the healthcare renewal for our employees. You'll see legislation tonight for that. We reviewed the final appropriation for 2015. We'll see, we'll see legislation for that tonight. We reviewed the 2016 appropriation, and worked on that some, and that will be upcoming soon. Soon, we'll be looking at our property and casualty insurance renewal, and Yvonne and I have done some work on that. I want to thank all the residents that overwhelmingly passed the rec levy. That helps our budget, that serves our community, and it allows us to spend money with, or for recreation in our community. I do want to remind people that your tax bill's going down, all other things equal, because the pool bond levy, a .78 millage expires at the end of this year. So all other facts considered, or all other facts being the same, your-
Do we know what that means for $100,000 home or?
Nope. Any other questions on that? I did want to run through some revenue numbers, and I know that's kind of difficult to do in this format with people that don't see the numbers. Council does have a budget packet that our finance director provides to us each month. So to make it easier to understand, I'm gonna round to the nearest 1,000, and I'm gonna give you the up or down percentage. Revenue that comes into the budget goes into either the general fund or special designated funds. The revenue in the general fund is the largest fund. We can use that for a variety of purposes, and we can transfer money from that fund into other funds should they need additional revenue. Year-to-date, the income tax is $902,000, and it's up 6%. So folks in Green Hills are either doing a little better, working overtime, or we're getting better at collecting taxes. The real estate tax received is $355,000. It's down 1.93% from prior year, and that either means that our evaluations are going down a little bit still, or we have some people that haven't paid their tax bill, and we know that that's the case for some, some commercial property. Overall, the general fund has revenue of $1,588, which is up about a half a percent over the same time last year. And on the expense side of the ledger, year-to-date, our expenses are $1,462, and that's down $367,000 from the prior year. We've appropriated $1,685,000, which is, we've appropriated 72% of the budget so far this year, so, or we've expended 72% of that $1,685. So, did I get that right, Matt? You gave me the look, okay. So, so we're in a very tight budget. You can tell the revenues aren't up very much, and we've had a close eye on spending this year, which will be the theme for next year, too, so. That concludes my report. I do have some legislation at the appropriate time.
Any questions?
I'll make a comment back to Jeff. It's about $60 per $100,000 home.
Thank you.
Perfect. I had your name right here, you just jump in, that's a perfect lead in, thank you.
Okay. Moving on, recreation cable television, councilmember Hermes.
Thanks, Mayor. Just want to make a point. Walking paths, running and walking paths, was discussed five years ago by Vince Wesley, the head chair, and it was his idea in the very beginning. And there it is, Vince, you got it. It took a while. So I just, that's what the Recreation Commission does, gives the ideas, and you kind of think sometimes a government doesn't work, but it does eventually if you have a little bit of patience.
It's five years ahead of Cincinnati time, right?
Yeah, exactly. So, yeah, it's wonderful that it's down, and thank you very much for taking care of that community development. Otherwise, I really don't have any, anything else to say. Oh, but I will say something a little bit later on in reference to a resolution. Okay?
Questions, comments? Hearing none, intergovernmental affairs, laws and rules, councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The items that will be discussed at the November 30th committee meeting at 10:00 a.m. have to do with some proposed changes in the rules of the council. Those were brought up at the- Those were brought up at the, at the last work session. And our law director has given us some input on that, and we'll be discussing those at that time. Other than that, there's, there's no other actions by laws and rules at this, at this point. I would like to point out, as far as intergovernmental aspect of, of the committee, that there were two Green Hills residents elected to the Wynton Wood School Board in this past election, actually, I'm sorry, one elected and one, one appointed, that being Paula Coon being elected. And Jeff Burdy was, was appointed for the, a two-year term on the school board. And this is the first time that the school board, or Green Hills has had representation on the school board in, in four years. So, glad, glad to see that. That's all.
Wow, in the previous four years, there was no Green Hills resident?
No.
So you were the last?
Yeah.
Wow. I didn't realize that.
Any other comments, questions? Moving on, unfinished business and general orders, ordinance number 2015-10-SNS, ordinance amending Green Hills Code of Ordinances, Chapter 939, garbage and refuse disposal, council member Walter.
Mr. Mayor, I have ordinance number 2015-10-SNS, ordinance amending Green Hills Code of Ordinances, Chapter 939, garbage and refuse disposal. Whereas, village council has determined that there is a need to amend regulations pertaining to garbage and refuse collection. Now therefore, being ordained by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, State of Ohio, Section 1, that Chapter 939 is hereby amended to read as a state on Exhibit A to this ordinance. And Section 2, the this ordinance shall be in effect from and after the earliest possible allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt this ordinance.
She said it's at your earliest period, not possible. She said earliest possible of a period.
Eariest period.
Yeah, okay.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 2015-10-SNS. Any discussion?
Ms. Kovak, would you like to?
Sure, okay.
I can take a shot at it based on what I know.
Go for it.
There'll, there'll be something going into the Journal about this. It's, you know, beginning March 1st, residents will be billed for the expense of solid waste and recycling collection. And it's not anything we've taken lightly. It's been necessary primarily because of the State of Ohio's decision to withhold revenue from the inheritance tax. There, you know, that's, in large part, that's what it is. If that didn't take place, this wouldn't be necessary. This is very typical of surrounding communities.
Jeff, is this, is this beyond just this ordinance? Because this is just the, the amending the ordinance for?
Yes.
Oh, I'm jumping ahead.
No, it adds Section 93911, solid waste and recycling collection fee. It is on the last two pages.
Oh, okay, okay.
To me, that's probably the most impactful.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. But it's something we've talked about multiple times, and...
For months.
Yeah, my, one of my concerns, though, is, you know, making sure the community knows that we're not making this decision lightly. Things to keep in mind, so what, what it really comes down to from a cost standpoint, it's a monthly rate of increase, $12.55 per household. Based on the, you said it was $60 annually savings for the pool.
For a $100,000 house.
For a $100,000 house. So it's always tough to compare apples with apples, but if you were in a $100,000 house, that means your $12.55, 55 cents per month would drop to $7.55. Hopefully, this is not too much information. This, this will be coming out in the Green Hills Journal. What else would we want to add to that?
That, that is really the biggest piece in the amendments that we have.
Well, the only, the only other comment that I have.
Yeah, the other thing, let me just, good, good catch, Melanie. The average that we received from the inheritance tax was $256,000, and that's over a 13-year period where that average came. At times, it was as much as $624,000 in one year that we received revenue. And it is varied throughout that, you know, because obviously you don't know what you're going to receive from an inheritance point of view. But that is a huge loss. We're not the only community that's feeling that kind of pressure. So to replace that, you know, it's necessary for us to do this so that we're in good standing down, down the road to...
I just wanted to add that I saw the, the different choices that we had. We had four different choices, and we decided to, to go with the choice number three. And that was the, the main reason that I saw that. It was five cents cheaper than any of the other ones, but that was not all. It was only tying us for three years with a, a reason, if we need to, to add the fourth and the fifth. It didn't lock us up in five years at a time. Also, I asked the village manager if there were other bids involved, and we belong in a consortium for Hamilton County. And yes, they were sought out, other bids. There were other two that said, yes, they were going to submit it, but at the last minute did not. So the rumpke was the only bid that was submitted at the time.
The other thing I wanted to point out, because you hate to say, oh, well, by the way, you owe some more money based on now collect, you have to pay for your own garbage. Not only with the pool levy falling off, but another thing to consider is we have almost half, about half of our residents that are not participating in the village gas and electric aggregation. And the savings there can be pretty significant and could easily offset this cost. So if you are not a participant in the village gas and electric aggregation program, and we have well over 400 or 500, at least, I think, that, that are not, a simple call to the village, they can give you the numbers and get you set up so that you can save that money and even maybe more than what this will cost as far as garbage collection goes. But that, that's...
If I, if I might add, add, add something to that, the, the cost of $12.55 per month, or $150 a year, is actually less than the estimate that, that staff gave us when we started really looking at this, this past, this past summer. And when you compare that against surrounding communities who have, who have not participated in a consortium, that rate is actually three to $4 a month less than what someone in Springfield Township, for instance, is, is paying. So, you know, there, there is, there is a benefit to that. Rumpke will be giving each resident the new, new trash can, so there's a standardization there, not only with the, with the, with the trash bin, but the recycle, recycle bin.
Recycling bin.
The recycling will occur every other week. We'll probably get some sort of card with a calendar on it to get people kind of up, up to speed on that.
And it's a 64-gallon.
Yeah, so, so there'll be, be plenty. You know, the, the other thing that's, that's added to the, the reductions, not only the, the tax, the tax reduction, I believe we also have the refinancing that's, of the, of bond that needs to be added, added into that in addition to the pool and the curb, but the expiration. But those residents who also currently pay $14 a year for a recycled bin, that will not be necessary as well. So it, it, once you add those sort of things up, it's, it's not, it's pretty, coming pretty close to a wash, if, if not for, for many people. You know, I, I think as we've hashed this issue among, we, you know, we looked at the possibility of, of a possible tax increase of levy. This eliminates any, any need for that and that discussion. But also the increased recycling, you know, my personal experience is that it, when I recycle, started recycling, my trash can became much lighter. It was much easier to get, to get to the curb. And I think that's important for some of our, some of our residents. The reduced tonnage will, will help us keep costs down in the future. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of benefits to this, and I wholeheartedly support the, the ordinance.
And Ms. Kovak, if I understand correctly, we discussed this before, the amount of the garbage was not going to be in any way changed. So, and also, just one, it was, it was clarified a minute ago, the only thing that we're getting are the bins for the recycling. Or the garbage cans for the recycling. We keep our regular garbage cans and as many as we need to put in the curb without any penalties.
That's right.
We just want to confirm that, so anybody that is listening to that, we work very, very hard in order to, not to, portale in many other places. We have only one and one, so we've worked very hard, our manager worked very hard to make sure that that was a deal that we could keep. And that we will have some kind of schedule then, so we will know when to put the recyclables on the curb.
I'm just going to be watching for what my neighbors do.
Yeah, and I'll mention one...
I put mine out in the morning.
One other community that my son lives, one of my sons lives in Madeira, and they pay for their own trash collection. And he couldn't remember the exact amount, but it was a little over $200 a year. And he's, and he pays that much for a large 90-gallon can, which a lot of people in our community use. And he gets recycling with that, but everything's got to fit in that can. If he has anything that doesn't fit in the can, then he has to buy a sticker to place on it to get that picked up. So, yeah, it's a good deal. All right, call for a roll call, vote?
Brokaw?
Aye.
Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Walter?
Aye.
Okay, ordinance number 2015-10-SNS, amending Green Hills Code of Ordinances, Chapter 939, garbage and refuse disposal, passes. Okay. New business, ordinance number 2015-11-LNR, ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances for the Village of Green Hills and declaring an emergency. Council member Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I move that, that we suspend the rules requiring the reading of the ordinance in full and read by title only.
Second?
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 I second. If I can do it again? Second.
He's a whisperer.
Do we do a roll call on this, or just a motion, or just a vote?
Typically, it requires five, suspend the rules for the emergency, so it probably would be best to do a roll call.
Okay.
Am I missing some pages? It says emergency on it.
Do you need us to send emergency?
Okay. Is it only a page?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, no, but it's also says, as attached somewhere.
It's all the, the changes are the attachments, all the code changes that go into the book.
What, yeah, but we don't have... What changes?
All the ordinances we passed all year.
So it's, when we, when we adopt an ordinance, it doesn't automatically get included? But can you explain this to me?
When you adopt an ordinance and it becomes effective, yes, it is effective, it's the law. What this does, this is really as part of the, with your publisher, so that you can update your book, basically. This is to make sure everything goes in your codified version, so that you have an up-to-date codified version of your code.
Isn't that just part of our contract with them?
Yeah, it is part of the contract with them, but every, every year, they assemble all of the ordinances that we have done throughout the year, and then you adopt this supplement, yeah, so you can officially add that to your codified.
That's when we actually have to bring our book in and they add all the stuff to our book and give it back to you?
That, that's true. And the, the other thing that it does, thank you, is that, and then beyond some of the things that you have adopted through the course of the year, it does adopt some changes in the state law, so like when there are changes in the, in traffic laws, part of what your publisher does is changes your local traffic code to adopt those state changes. So this is, it's a combination of those two things. It's the, it's the changes you've made to your own code throughout the year, and, and then it adopts some state changes that incorporates them by reference. And this is, it's really a housekeeping thing, something you do every year to make sure your codified book is up to date.
And the two of you review it? Three of you? Book itself? Yeah? Yes. Okay.
Yeah, they send us supplement pages, so you can see everything that's going in, and then they also send you a handy instruction sheet, you know, that says, take out page 16.
I'm quite familiar with that.
Yeah.
Yes.
I believe I used to get paid a dollar a book as a child to update them.
What you're writing now?
Much higher. It was before child labor.
Does this mean that we just got the information and therefore that's why we have the emergency clause?
I'll defer to, to your clerk. Typically, we do this as an emergency because then there's no interruption, and it's, and it's the fastest way to get your codified version up to date.
So we have that next year, early next year. Okay, roll call?
We need the roll call and the suspension of the rules.
Okay.
What?
Suspension of the rules.
And so what are we voting on?
Suspending the rule.
Suspending the rule.
Both, both the reading, just the title only, and as an emergency, or just? Just?
The, the motion was only to, was to read by title only.
Okay.
Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Walter?
Aye.
Brokaw?
No, I want him to read the whole thing. It's short. Who else gets that?
Ordinance, ordinance number 2015-11-LNR, an ordinance enacting and adopting the supplement of the Code of Ordinances for the Village of Green Hills and declaring an emergency. Whereas, the American...
You don't have to. They, it passed.
Yeah.
You only had to read the title only. Even though I said no.
Okay, so where are we now here?
No, no, Melanie's making things really difficult here, huh?
This is only the, the first reading, so you need to suspend the rule requiring...
A second reading.
Reading on, two times on two separate occasions.
Right. Okay, first reading.
No, no.
You can suspend the rule.
Suspend the rule, requiring two readings. You just didn't do it the first time.
You just have to do it again with the reading of the second.
I move to suspend the rules requiring...
I, well, I said that once already.
You didn't say emergency.
I don't, I don't have to. It's in part of the title.
Okay.
Okay, I'm confused.
Timeout.
I was just voting on whether...
There are, there are two rules that typically you would suspend. One is to read it in its entirety.
And that's the one we just did.
Which you just did. The second is to suspend the rule requiring that you read it two times on two separate occasions. You have not made that motion yet. If you want to act on it tonight, you have to suspend the, the rule requiring multiple readings.
You ready to go, Jack?
I move to suspend the rules requiring the reading of, of the ordinance in, in full on two, two times and two separate occasions.
Second. All right, now. All right, now, roll call on that, too? All right.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Brokaw?
Aye.
Dries?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right, now.
Now do we?
Now we have to act on it?
We have to pass.
You can move to adopt.
I move to adopt ordinance number 2015-11-LNR, an ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances for the Village of Green Hills and declaring an emergency.
Second.
All right, now, do we have any more comments to make? All right, hearing, uh, call, roll call vote to adopt ordinance 2015-11-LNR.
Because this is an emergency, it will require five votes.
Hermes?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Brokaw?
Aye.
Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
They got six.
All right, ordinance 2015-11-LNR carries ordinance enacting and adopting supplemental, a supplement to the Code of Ordinances for the Village of Green Hills and declaring an emergency. All right, next item, resolution 2015-41-F, authorizing the municipal man-
I'll take care of it. Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I move that we remove resolution 2015-41-F from the agenda this evening.
Can I second it?
Is that a question?
Do we need a roll call on that?
Yes, and it takes two thirds vote to amend the agenda, which is what you're doing.
Okay.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded to, uh, remove this from the agenda. Do you want to say anything? We're still in negotiations.
Mr. Suggs would like to meet with the municipal manager for further discussion.
Okay. All right, roll call?
Lee?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Brokaw?
Aye.
Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, removed from the agenda. All right, resolution 2015-42-F, authorizing the municipal manager to execute an agreement with Greater Cincinnati Water Works for Waste Collection Billing Services, Councilmember Dries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2015-42-F, authorizing municipal manager to execute an agreement with the Greater Cincinnati Water Works for Waste Collection Billing Surfaces, Services, whereas the Village of Green Hills finds it necessary to bill its residents and/or residential property owners for waste collection services, and whereas the Greater Cincinnati Water Works has expertise in billing services and can therefore provide these services in a cost-effective and efficient means to the Village of Green Hills, now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, Section 1, that the municipal manager is hereby authorized to execute the attached agreement with the City of Cincinnati, Greater Cincinnati Water Works for Waste Collection Billing Services substantially in the form attached here to as Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference, Section 2, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, adopt, adopt resolution 2015-42-F, any second?
Just a comment, um, we need a mechanism to, um, pay for the waste collection, and everybody, every address gets a water bill, um, and these people have expertise in doing it, they do it for several other communities, and we found them to be professional and cost-effective in doing such.
All right, any others?
I believe we had discussion about the village would pay the fees for collection, so it is not passed on to the residents. The residents will only be paying the amount for the garbage collection.
Correct. Okay, call for a roll call vote on this resolution?
Walther?
Aye.
Brokaw?
Aye.
Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Resolution number 2015-42-F, authorizing the municipal manager to execute an agreement with the Greater Cincinnati Water Works for Waste Collection Billing Services, passes. Next item, resolution 2015-43-SNS, resolution authorizing the municipal manager to enter into an agreement with Rumkey for Waste Collection and Recycling Services, Councilmember Walther.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 2015-43-SNS, this is a resolution authorizing the municipal manager to enter into an agreement with Rumkey for Waste Collection and Recycling Services, whereas the Village of Green Hills participates in the Southwest Ohio Solid Waste Regional Refuge Consortium, also known as SWORE, with other municipalities, that is coordinated by the Center for Local Governments, CLG, to obtain affordable and effective solid waste and recyclable material collection services for its residents, and whereas following a competitive bid process produced by the CLG for the consortium Rumkey is a selected service provider, and whereas the Village of Green Hills desires to enter into an agreement with Rumkey for solid, solid waste and recycling collection services, now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Section 1, that the municipal manager is hereby authorized to enter into an agreement with Rumkey for said services, consistent with a bid submitted by Rumkey dated November the 4th, 2015, and specifically calling for the following, a three-year contract with two one-year renewal options and collection of recyclables every other week. Section 2, that said agreement will be reviewed and approved by the village solicitor prior to execution by the municipal manager. And Section 3, that this resolution shall be and is in effect from and after the date of its passage by council. And, Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, adopt resolution 2015-43-SNS. Any comments, questions?
When does this contract go into effect?
March 1st.
So still put your recycling out every week?
Correct.
So the first bill that would show that, involving the water works bill, would be then March 31st?
Be in June, that'll be in June.
It will actually be in June.
It'll be in June.
Because of the billing cycle for Water Works. What they're hoping to do though is the, um, bill prior to that, to be able to send a notice reminding everybody about the additional charge that would be coming on the following one, but yes, that would be in, in the June billing that they would receive.
This is a three-year contract with two one-year extensions possible.
Correct.
Correct.
What is the cost for, do we have, that's an undetermined cost on the extensions, correct?
No. It's on, on the sheet that I gave you, you'll see the-
Is it $1,295 and $1,335 respectively for one year and then for the second extension?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And it's cheaper to do the $1,255 versus the other way by a few cents?
We calculated, I think it was five cents.
Yeah.
The savings.
Wow.
Yes. I don't know.
Awesome.
All right, hearing no further discussion, uh, call, roll call vote on resolution 2015-43-SNS.
Brokaw?
Aye.
Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Resolution 2015-43-SNS, authorizing the municipal manager to enter into an agreement with Rumkey for Waste Collection and Recycling Services, passes. Next item, resolution 2015-44-LNR, resolution establishing a pre-planning policy for the use of municipal facilities and proposed special events. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 2015-44-LNR, resolution establishing a pre-planning policy for the use of municipal, municipal facilities and proposed special events, whereas the Village of Green Hills desires to outline procedures to be followed for the use of municipal facilities and proposed special events, now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, Section 1, that the attached pre-planning policy shall be utilized for all persons, entities, organizations, et cetera, wanting to utilize municipal facilities or who want to create or conduct special events that in any way involve the Village of Green Hills. Section 2, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move that this resolution be passed this day.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, pass resolution 2015-44-LNR. Any discussion?
I have a problem with, uh, the, the idea of it, I understand perfectly that, um, the village owns the properties. I understand also the degree of liability involved there, um, and that's not a problem here. I have a problem on the finality of it, I know that we have, I revise this question and bear with me because I saw this for the first time on the work session, so I've gone through it several times, and I know that the questions are, are proper questions, everything else, it bothers me the fact that there is no right of appeal, um, when this is turned down for some reason, um, after all the process has gone through, and it bothers me that there is no, um, right of appeal for, to counsel on that. Supposedly after all this, you have applied, you have answered all the questions, et cetera, and then the person received the word no back. It bothers me that the person would have no right of appeal.
But when has that ever happened? No, it never happens.
Well, we don't know that, and then having it written, and that bothers you.
Okay, hold on, there is a section that it's reviewed by council.
It says the village will decide if the, can take place. It doesn't say the manager.
Right, I, I would prepare a report with all the information to come to council, and then by motion of council, council would approve that, so I-
And then after council approves or denies, if the council denies, then that's it, it's moot, the person would not be able to-
Correct.
-move on anything for it.
Well, I mean, you should be the body that makes that decision, it's-
That's, I, that's for Part B, but what about for Part A?
Well, that's a very easy process that we've been going through over and over again. That, that's really just reiterating the, the typical facility rental process we go through right now.
Correct.
It's really just for the bigger ones that we seem to struggle for a process to organize those, so that's really the big piece, and, and again, if something's that big and it's affecting the property that you're responsible for, that, that seems only right that that would be summarized for you and brought to you for approval or, or denial, whatever.
I think one of the things that we should look at, and I've looked at too, is, are these unreasonable questions? What is the activity? What is the size of the event? Who is the audience? What exposure to participant, you know, what exposure is there to participants and therefore the village? Do they intend to have alcohol? I think those are very bread and butter, basic questions, like you said, you're gathering information to then bring it to us for discussion, so.
I have a problem with that.
But I'm, I'm trying to understand, because, so if I understand the process correctly, those basic building blocks of what event they're hoping to have is brought forth, and then it's brought to us as council, correct, at that point?
Not Part A.
Right, Part A is more the person who wants to-
Oh, the Part A, okay.
-rent it for like a birthday party or, you know, that might be the thing.
That makes sense.
Then, then Part B, those are the big ones that would require, you know, perhaps security, perhaps-
And that's the part that we're involved with, the decision.
Correct, yes.
Now, will there be an exchange between the party applying here and when they said no, if you were doing this, this other way, then it would be acceptable or not, or is immediately going, you know, to present to council as it is? It doesn't have a chance for the person that is renting the facility to make any changes or to accommodate our, our needs.
They could resubmit, couldn't they?
Well, they could, now, my plan would be to sit down and go through a checklist with each person on, you know, have you thought of this, have you thought of that, are you planning on doing this, are you planning on doing that? I, I think what I've witnessed is the need to educate the person, maybe who's trying to plan something, on all the different steps they do need to take into consideration, and it would be great to be doing that in advance, not on the back end. So I, I think it's very much an educational process as well as just, hopefully it'll help the person interested in doing the event to, you know, in their own mind, go through all the different steps.
So the person will have a participation talking with you?
Great, and we would summarize that for council.
And then you will summarize that for council?
Correct.
Okay.
You know, another thing to consider though is, um, it, you know, we have to look at, and I thought this would be a good idea to discuss this at the retreat, what our role is. And I've brought it up before, I know Blue Ash, I'm driving by their park, it's phenomenal, they have a lot more finances, they have a lot more, um, resources to do that, they have full-time staff, for example. So I think that there could be reasons that have, that might reflect on the event and how it's being proposed, and there could be reasons that are outside of that where hopefully we're making a decision that's for the betterment of the community as a whole, not just for an individual that has a passion for something. And I'm not ruling it out, they could have a passion and it aligns with, you know, what might be good for the rest of the residents. I don't know if we always have to have, um, you know, I don't know if it should be such a thing as like you check these boxes, there could be other factors. Hopefully, we're weighing it from a community perspective, not an individual passion perspective. I, I think that's important.
I just didn't want to, anybody to feel shut down right away, I wanted to make sure there was a dialogue involved.
You know, the one, the one thing I will say though is, I, this has come up several times, I really have a little bit of an issue that, especially more up amongst ourselves, that it's almost like guilty until proven innocent. We have a passion for the community, and I, if, if we don't, I would hope that we would resign on the spot. We don't have a goal to shut anybody down, as much as people might feel like that's the case because they've gotten a no, the goal is to help the community. If we're not up here doing that, I recommend that we resign instantly. So, you know, I just, I feel like there's a constant, like, assumption sometimes that comes across, like, we are not thinking of the community when we tell somebody no. I don't think that's the case.
I just wanted to make sure that there was some dialogue involved with whatever party it was.
But if we care for the community, there would be dialogue.
I'm, I'm looking at this, and I just wanted to say, what was it I wanted to say? The pre-planning policy, just because I want everyone to have to say that. I think this list is a guide to getting a yes. If an organization or person got this, they would see what they need to do to get the yes. This is, have, coming to the village with questions already answered, so I'm looking at this as a guideline to get your yes for your event.
I, I would agree with that, but I think we do still have to keep in mind, lots of times what happens is it involves village resources. So there are going to be those components going, can we truly afford to spend $5,000 on an event that has produced very little results, um, time and time again? So there, I just want to still have the room in there that there, it could be a guide to getting a yes, and it positions people for a yes, but there are going to be other factors that I think we should be taking into consideration, from my, my point of view.
I, I also think it's important, and I think this goes to our, our discussion that, that you want to ensue in the, uh, retreat, is that, we're a body of governance, we're not a manage, manager. We have a village manager to make, make these decisions, and, and I hope we have the good sense to, to recognize that and, and not micromanage things from, from our council seat. So, you know, it, I, I think it's, it's important that, that this be in place, and I, as, as I view this, should something come up that needs further review, that will be given to us, so.
Okay, clerk, call the roll, resolution 2015-44-LNR.
Brokaw?
Aye.
Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Walther?
Abstain.
Now, the council rules indicate that you, if you're present, you need to vote on the matter. Right, unless there's a conflict of interest that would prevent you from participating-
Right, unless there's a conflict of interest that would prevent you from participating in it. So if you're here and participating in it, the council rules require a "yes" or a "no" vote.
The "no."
Resolution 2015-44-LNR carries Resolution establishing a pre-planning policy for the use of municipal facilities and proposed special events. Okay, moving on. Resolution 2015-45-F, Resolution authorizing assessment on certain properties in the Village of Green Hills. Councilmember Dries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2015-45-F, Resolution authorizing assessments on certain properties in the Village of Green Hills. Whereas the village has given proper notice to the owners of certain real property in the Village of Green Hills regarding the removal of vegetation, refuse, garbage, and/or debris from the properties listed below, and whereas the owners of said properties did not take action to remedy the violations, and therefore the Village of Green Hills contracted to remove vegetation, refuse, garbage, and/or debris, and now seeks to collect said expenses by authorizing the placement of a lien upon the lands and collect it as other taxes. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills. Section 1, that the Village of Green Hill...the Village Council hereby certifies that the cost of such labor, together with the expenses relative thereto, be filed on the return and statement of the Hamilton County Commissioners as an assessment against the properties listed and placed as a lien against the properties by the order of the Hamilton County, Ohio, as follows. Address 30 Imbler Drive. Owner Christina Trust. Cost $117.91. Section 2, all amounts collected as a result of this resolution shall be placed in the general fund of the Village of Green Hills. Section 3, this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution number 2015-45-F. Comments or questions?
Question of the village manager. I meant to go back and check the previous resolution that where we assessed different properties. Was this one of the...in addition to one of those ones that were...was assessed earlier?
I would really have to look back.
Okay. I'm sorry, I meant to look at that, but...
I don't know by heart. I do know that we're anxious to get this listed on the tax lien. It's foreclosure, it's owned by a bank right now, and if the change occurs, we'd want to have it recorded.
Yeah, okay.
But I can look that up and let you know.
All right.
Clerk call the roll. Resolution 2015-45-F.
Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Walter?
Aye.
Brokaw?
Aye.
Resolution 2015-45-F, authorizing the assessment of certain properties in the Village of Green Hills passes. Okay, another one. Resolution number 2015-46-F, authorizing the municipal manager to enter into an agreement with Anthem for providing health insurance coverage for the employees of the Village of Green Hills. Councilmember Dries.
Resolution 2015-46-F, authorizing the municipal manager to enter into an agreement with Anthem for providing health insurance coverage for the employees of the Village of Green Hills. Whereas the Village of Green Hills provides health insurance benefits for eligible employees, and whereas the village has utilized Toran Associates to request and review proposals for health insurance coverage from various carriers and determine that the proposal submitted by Anthem is the best proposal for the village in terms of quality, service, and adaptability. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio. Section 1, that the municipal manager is hereby authorized to enter into an agreement with Anthem for the purpose of providing health insurance for eligible employees for a term commencing December 1, 2015, until November 30, 2016. Section 2, that the village is offering a dual option plan and will pay the same employer contribution dollar amount for both plans. The dollar amount is based on 80% of the highest priced premium plan. Section 3, that the finance director is hereby authorized to pay Anthem monthly premiums, totaling an annual amount of approximately $87,920. Said amount fluctuating depending on the number of persons enrolled in the plan. Section 4, that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon its adoption. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 2015-46-F. Any discussion?
I'd just like to thank the municipal manager and the finance director for working so hard on this. Healthcare is not an easy issue, but it's a critically important issue for our employees. It's part of their total compensation, and I think we've been very fair with them and found the best option available in the marketplace.
I think we had a great discussion at the finance committee, and I like the idea of the dual option. Do they have enough time to make their election before this December 1st?
Yes, they already have.
Was this much of an increase over the prior year, and was it within our projected budgetary limits?
The increase was, I believe, 7.6%. And I had budgeted 10% before.
So...
Truly, it's good.
Yeah, good deal.
Is it the same provider as previously?
Yes.
So you're deductible from the...I know when you have a not January 1 starting date, sometimes the deductible starts January 1.
It does.
So on this situation, if you ever look to change providers, it might be beneficial to go 13 months. I know January 1 isn't a hard deadline, but with all the rules about the rollover for deductibles and high deductible health plans, it would be...if you ever think of changing providers, it would be hard for someone who went to the doctor in December and then had a lot of expenses, and then January 1, that starts over. So it's just something to think about.
Roll call for Resolution 2015-46-F.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Walter?
Aye.
Brokaw?
Aye.
Dries?
Aye.
Resolution 2015-46-F that passes, authorizing the municipal manager to enter into an agreement with Anthem for providing health insurance coverage for the employees of the Village of Green Hills.
Good job.
Next item. Resolution 2015-47-F, Resolution approving the Green Hills' annual permanent appropriations for 2015. Councilmember Dries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2015-47-F, Resolution approving the Green Hills' annual permanent appropriation for 2015. A resolution to make final permanent appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the Village of Green Hills, State of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2015 pursuant to Exhibit A, final permanent appropriation for 2015 attached here too, and by reference made a part here of. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, State of Ohio, that to provide for the current expenses and other expenditures of the Village of Green Hills during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2015, the following sums be, and they are hereby set aside and appropriated as follows, namely, Section 1, that there be appropriated from the general fund, $1,794,516. Section 2, that there be appropriated from the special revenue funds, $1,316,828. Section 3, that there be appropriated from the debt bond retirement fund, $1,302,808.61. Section 4, that there be appropriated from the special assessment fund, $49,300. Section 5, that there be appropriated from the capital projects funds, $562,231.75 for a grand total of $5,025,684.36 from...for all funds. Section 6, and the village finance director is hereby authorized to draw warrants for payments from any of the foregoing appropriations upon receiving proper certificates and vouchers therefore approved by the Board of Officers, authorized by the law to approve the same, or in ordinance or resolution of council to make the expenditures provided that no warrant shall be drawn or paid for salaries or wages except to persons employed by authority of and in accordance with law and with law or ordinance. Section 7, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon passage. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of Resolution 2015-47-F.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 2015-47-F. Any discussion?
Exhibit A.
Yeah, I have additional copies. Matt had emailed it out on Friday, so... Anyway, I don't know if you want Matt to agree, but he had sent it to you with some notes as far as the numbers that you were seeing and what those meant.
Yeah, there were some changes in there. Were there, there were some orders changed or some amounts that were changed from column?
Yes, the main changes were to put us in compliance with ORC, was to properly reflect that only the salaries were in the personal services categories, and all the other expenses were in the all other category. In total, the appropriations were decreased predominantly by transfers out that were less than we had expected, and capital outlay since we had received the MRF funding. We were able to purchase the service truck out of the street fund, and that freed up the general fund money. So that's the biggest portion of the changes here. And there's also a few housekeeping things for the end of the year or two.
Like what, for example?
Let's see. There is one for $2,000 in refuse collection and disposal. That's just a...that one is going to be closed, it's just for a cushion.
The golf course changed $100 bucks. There's a lot of small ones like that.
Yeah.
Any further questions? Clerk call the roll on Resolution 2015-47-F.
Hermes?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Walter?
Aye.
Brokaw?
Aye.
Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Resolution 2015-47-F, Resolution approving the Green Hills' annual permanent appropriations for 2015 passes. And that's all we have. Calendar?
I have a comment. That the mayor reminded me for the streets and services meeting on the 28th, I will actually be out of town for that.
Okay. What would you suggest? What other day would you suggest? What other month would you suggest? In other words... Yeah, that would be okay.
That work?
Yes. So we're exchanging the streets and services to December 14 at 9:00?
It's on for me, yes.
And who would like to go look at lights and when?
Mr. Mayor, may I make a suggestion, only because I was involved in that before, and someone did it for me, and it was really neat. After the election, Mr. Merle asked if, since I was already elected, if I would go with him to look at the lights, and we have here our future council person sitting right there. I think it was a really neat experience to be part of that at the time, and if...sorry, Mr. Cavote, but I thought you would be thrilled with the suggestion, and I can see you are. So I just wanted to suggest if one of the persons, we can bring him in to be a part of that.
Okay, all right. Well, how many people would like to do it sometime on the week of December 14?
I'm free.
Monday, the 14th, Tuesday?
Monday, the 14th is okay with me, and Tuesdays too.
I have a council meeting on Tuesday.
So it'd be nice to have at least...
Mayor trustees, one of those.
Three people to join me.
I have a pretty challenging week that week.
I can do it. You can count on me.
What...were you looking at doing it on the 14th?
In the evening.
Okay.
Six o'clock, something like that.
Six o'clock or so.
Well, I have an eye appointment earlier that day, so if I'm... Well, actually, that will work out because I'll be officially dialing. I'll really see the lights. Yeah, I'll do it on the 14th.
Okay, the 14th.
All right, okay.
You look okay...your calendar looks okay for that, too?
Okay, December 14th, we'll meet up here at 6:00.
December 4 is Light Up Green Hills, and I am telling you, as good as it was last year, it's going to be even better this year. There's a couple surprises, and I'm not telling them. You got to be there to experience it.
Reindeer burgers.
I'm not telling them. You got to be there. It is a great event for young and old alike. It is what Jeff Halter loves to say, it's free. It starts at 6:00 and goes to 8:00. It's a great place to see your neighbors. We've upped our game yet again this year. Bring your children, your grandchildren, your neighbors. Be there. It'll be a great event. Promise. Scouts honor.
Okay, anything else?
For calendar? November 30, Monday, 10:00 a.m., laws and rules.
I think you said 6:00.
Not the Light Up Green Hills.
Oh, no. I think you said 6:00.
The judging was at 6:00.
Okay, is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Great, meeting adjourned.